Hi Mercedes.
Welcome back Amy.
Thank you. Did you cut your hair or do you have it pulled back? It looks different.
I did. I cut a whole bunch of it off.
Oh, cute. Before everybody gets here, I wanted to let you know I had a discussion with DOJ this morning. And they're realizing that they haven't really been responsive to some of the things that the task force has asked for. So I just wanted to connect with you maybe after this meeting and just share what I learned and see if we can come up with a plan.
Okay, and you weren't at the last meeting, but we did talk about kind of consolidating our DOJ specific questions and using kind of a draft that one of the task force members already started with DOJ specific questions. So that we could, we could send them like something directly for DOJ to respond to. I think we definitely wanted at the last meeting to hear a little bit more about like wherein your process is DOJ to help refine some of those questions. So I think you're, you're right on that. We haven't gotten as much detail from them, but I'm not sure we would have been able to articulate our questions as well up until now. I feel like we're getting, we're getting to the point where we're really going to be able to, you know, be more specific with them about what we want to know. But I would love to hear what else you've learned.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Welcome, everybody. I guess we're officially called to order. This is the agenda planning meeting. And it looks like we only have a couple of folks joining us for this one. Mary Ann, do you want to just say hello, roll call check-ins?
Okay. I know we got an email from Helen Wong that said that she would not be available. I don't know. I don't remember if it was for the regular meeting or for the agenda, but so Wetha, Ambita. I don't think she's on yet. Debbie Dennis.
I'm here.
And Mercedes.
Here.
Felicita.
Here.
And Mary Ann, I'm here. And then Helen Wong, we got an email saying that she either, I don't remember if it was the regular meeting or this meeting, but one of them, she said she would not be able to attend. And I see Phillips here.
I think Philip is, is one of our attendees watching.
Yes.
Our meeting. Thank you, audience. Love to see it. Okay, so let's talk about March. I think this is going to be another fairly straightforward agenda going through our departments again. I do want to put on our radar for this discussion in particular, the DAS risk management presentation. So during the last meeting, we had put it on the presentation. But the, we just had too much content and we started to get squished there at the end. For March, for this, this next coming meeting, I do wonder if the wages discussion will require more discussion. This is kind of like, I would say, a centerpiece of a lot of our work because even our other recommendations are meant to service this recommendation. And so I'm wondering what folks think about having the DAS risk mitigation presentation in April and how we feel about that. And then just having this meeting be exclusively about wages. Yes, Felicia.
I'm okay with that, but I'm, and I'm mindful that in April, I think we have two topics. The, of course, I'm forgetting what they are. One second, I have so many documents open. So yeah, it's based on our, our schedule. Let's see, standard contracting language and mechanism for ongoing review. So I'm seeing that we have two big agenda items for April. But I'm, I think this is a good problem to have that we are having such rich presentations and discussions. If we need to schedule another meeting, I'm certainly open to that. But I, like you said Mercedes, like wages is the big topic. So let's make sure we have plenty of time for it next week.
Yeah. So I will say, I think this if, where are my notes? Are you all in real time searching my notebook? Okay. I think one thing to keep in mind for the sufficient reporting and mechanism for review is that on the mechanism for review, I think we actually have a lot fewer pieces of information that we need to pull from the department. Just looking at those questions, there's a lot less of them. And we've already heard a lot about where the inconsistencies are among departments. Sufficient reporting, I could see being a longer discussion, but I also kind of feel like the risk mitigation and the reporting kind of go together because it sounds like there is some mechanism here that might be guiding the departments on what additional questions they have to ask, either in the application or contracting phase. So it kind of feels like maybe there might be some through lines there. And then I think the mechanism for ongoing review, it's not really about the departments as much as it feels like it's about what happened, like task force is over, all these recommendations are made. And what's the body that moves it forward? Like, we don't want to just like be done at the end of the task force. And I feel like that's maybe more of a discussion for, for the task force members than it, than that part actually is for the department. So what I could kind of actually see is that we do the presentations on sufficient reporting, the DAS risk mitigation, and then among ourselves as a task force, we're having the conversation about the mechanism for ongoing review. And if that has to get pushed to the following meeting, I think it actually would still make sense because then what we would be doing is starting to have our discussion internally about what of all the things we've learned, do we want to have the ongoing recommendations and a mechanism for ongoing review also starts to fit into that dialogue much better. Mary Ann.
So I vote yea, yay for moving the DAS risk management to April. Any seconds?
Second.
And then I was going to mention, when we met in our little subgroup about the program plan, there seems to be a lot of question around how are we doing, where are we at? And are we going to make it? So anything that we could do to show what we've progressed, what our plan is, what we're trying to build, any of that would be helpful for everybody to just kind of take a chill pill that we're going to be fine going forward.
Yeah, I know it's hard. And I brought this up at the last meeting too, that because we're in a listening phase where we're collecting a lot of information, it doesn't feel like a lot of doing right now. But we're, we're going to be done with our presentation soon. And I think to your point, let's make that look ahead a little bit longer. Let's maybe do 20 minutes in the look ahead. And what we can include there is maybe even a look back. So like a summary of what information you should have today, where I find that information if you don't already have it with you. And then what's coming in April, May and June? Because I think May, June, July, like these are, these are going to be when we're, we're really starting to put like some pen to paper. And so I think we can use that time to both, yeah, a little bit of a look back and a little bit of a look ahead to try to capture that. And also it could be, it essentially becomes like a last call to do homework, right? Like if you haven't been reading the public comment and you didn't read the memos, like we're getting to the point where you want to have done that so that you feel prepared for the May, June, July discussions and, and writings.
That sounds perfect. I just, just saying, you know, we're going to send out a a survey. And so we want to be very precise in our questions. So we're going to need your help whittling those questions down to the best possible questions we could be asking, those kinds of things.
Okay.
Sorry, just for clarification, is Mary Ann talking about a survey to the state agencies? Or to like committee members?
We had talked in our subgroups, and I think we talked in this one about doing a survey directly to the agencies that would be yes, no, or very simple answers that we could then populate our table. The table that I sent out.
Yep. Thanks, Mary Ann.
Yeah. And we're, we're kind of piloting that with this presentation because we, at our last agenda planning meeting, we developed a survey for the wages conversation. So for this presentation, we're going to be getting presentations from departments plus the results of their survey, which is a little different than previous where we were getting presentations plus memos. And so ooh, and it looks like we have survey results.
We have some, not all, yeah, this is what we've collected so far. So yeah, I can report that we're actively working on that and the agencies are participating. So I will have more to come and I will post the results on the webpage as well. Do you want to look, do you want to look at them?
Yeah, let's take a quick, let's take a quick peek and see, see what we're learning. Oh, it looks like we have some departments that are using the uniform guidance. That's good to know. Ooh, I like that mix of answers around if you have the authority to implement, something they do, something they don't. That's good to know too. No co-creation of RP is pretty much across the board. Interesting. We do have a couple missing, but definitely a mix of the standard application templates.
Very curious about that wage minimum. This is awesome. Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah. Really going to look forward to hearing more about that. So what do you think, Mary Ann? Does this feel like kind of the thing you were hoping to see?
Yes. And I think that will, I think that will calm some of the nerves that I hear.
So it feels like we've got our Tuesday agenda ready. We're just going to go through our departments and we're going to take a little bit more time for our own kind of discussion, look back and look ahead. Pretty, pretty simple. So then our next presentation. I know it's not sufficient reporting. It is the standard contract language. So I'm going to pull that up now on my screen. And we can go through what we want to send the departments for April. Does that look really teeny?
That's better. Even bigger would be better.
Okay. You all should see what it looks like on my side. It's on my big screen. So it just looks massive. Okay. How's that looking?
It's better. I can, I can make it work. Thank you.
Full screen looks great.
Okay, so up top here, these are the initial questions we collected in our jam board. So this one is going to, and so here we'll try to do the same sort of thing we did last time where we will all use this kind of extra space over here to the right to capture a survey question we might want to use. And then we'll also refine some questions if we want to consolidate some of these guys. Okay. So this is asking about templates. Amy, on that survey, what was the template question there? Was that on application?
It was, do you use standard grant application templates?
Okay. So then this one is going to be templates. So for the presentation, we want to know.
Can we ask, like as a follow-up to that? Just, I'm going to, I know this is just kind of thinking out loud. What I'm thinking is like, who writes that for you? Is the agency, is the entire agency using the same template? Are they working from last year's contract?
So does, does your whole agency use the same standard contract template?
Yeah, that would. This one, I would also get them to answer, their answer could be different for grants, for grant agreements versus contracts that are resulting from procurement. And I would, I think I would parse this out to ask that question.
I'm just going to delete. I think we're going to ask for maybe a couple of things. So one. If somebody, if folks will just give us what if they have them. So if you have a, like a template that you're using, kind of like the memo style, like send it to us as an attachment. What is like the base template that you're currently using? Okay. How does that look? One, share what your contract templates are. Does your whole agency use the same template? If not, how many templates are you using? And who writes and maintains the templates? And of course, are you using anything that other state agencies also use? And so I think these. So these, these are yes or no questions here as far as like, do you use templates? So I think we can I think of what we'd want in the survey versus the presentation.
Maybe the, in the survey, it's do you use contract templates? Do you use grant templates? And then in the presentation, it's the rest of the pieces. Well, the, yeah. Yeah, I'm mindful that the resume can't be yes or no, but I think they could be really short answers.
Also on the survey, like do you use standard contract templates? Do you use standard grant agreement templates? Does your entire agency use these templates or something like that? You want the survey to be yes or no, right?
I think that's what we were aiming for. So that's kind of like consolidating. Yeah, really just high level consolidating the responses. Okay. So maybe we leave our survey just to those, those two. Does your whole department use the same standard contract templates? Does your whole department use the same standard grant agreement templates?
Could I just bake one friendly amendment? I think we should say instead of department, agency. In our world, the departments are within the agencies. And so, yeah.
Okay. Our next question is what information is actually needed? But if the answer is in the 990.
So I was confused by this because 990 is a federal form. It's not a state form.
Right. I think somebody was maybe asking, or maybe saying that like, kind of like those, those terrible job websites where they make you upload your resume, but then also make you type into every box, every job that's on the resume. Like, I think this is one of those things that like sometimes you get a question in the application that's also a question you've had to answer. You know, to like even have an account on the platform in which you are submitting this application. So I wonder if it's, if that's what it's getting at. Go ahead, Felicia.
Yeah, I know I heard this multiple times over the last year, talking to nonprofits. My understanding is that just a very real world example, a nonprofit would be asked to submit their 990 as well as list out their board members. That information is in the 990. So it goes back to administrative burden and just asking a lot of nonprofits administratively.
So what, how do we want, this might be like a refining this question opportunity. What do we want the depart, like what are we asking agencies to tell us about? How they're putting this together? And this is also problem that comes up, I think in the con, in the applications? Or is it like, why is information I'm submitting in the application then not reflected in the contract where I have to resubmit it? I'm not sure. I thought I saw Mary Ann, Mary Ann's hand go up, but then I went back down again. Do you want to share something, Mary Ann? Or go ahead.
I guess I was just thinking, maybe the question is, if we're submitting the 990, is that information harvested? So it doesn't need to be entered a second time in the request for proposal or application?
Is it that? Go ahead Felicia.
I guess I'm thinking that, and I'm mindful that this could be a 10 hour presentation, but to me, it goes to the, the question of what is actually needed. And I don't know, that's, that's probably not the right way to word it. I'm wondering, what is, what is the information that is required for state agencies for their due diligence? And what is discretion? And I think that, I think Mercedes, you're right. This really goes back to last month's presentation. Because I don't think it's as much, why are you asking the question? It's why is the question being asked 10 different ways? So in a way, I think we could skip this question because I feel like we kind of got some answers last month.
Right. Because even this question, I feel like I already know the answer is no. Because we've already heard from people that it's no, right? Like.
Told us.
But if we have it, but if we have it and we've collected that information, then we can report that as 98% of them said they don't have a way to integrate.
So let's make this a yes, no question and put it on the survey. And then we won't have this question as part of the presentation. So I'm going to do this. I'm going to highlight this one in yellow because this is a presentation question. These are then survey questions. We're not going to highlight that guy because he's not going to be a question for the presentation. And I do see your comment there, Philip. But I think the last time we realized we didn't really have a way of unmuting the audience. But if you have access to the chat and you want to throw some info at us, feel free. Okay. So how much does legislative language create or disrupt templates that could be used? I like this question. I wonder if it makes sense though. Like I understand what this is asking. Other folks, what do you think? Because I know in some instances, like there's a literal copy and paste situation happening. Like something is copied directly from the legislative language into the application, and then you see it again in the contract. But that's not always true.
Does legislative language disrupt your templates? And then we can show legislators, hi legislators, this is what we're seeing.
I, I like the how question because I think what, like what could be interesting to come out of that is actually be a template for lawmakers. Like if you are writing a bill that's going to create a new program or a new, a new grant program or a new funding source that's going to require contracts, like here are the five ways that you have to talk about that so that you don't create disruption for the department and how they're currently doing it. Unless like you're literally asking them to recreate their procurement process just for your one thing. Because I know they have like standard language like that, like LPROS standard language like that for different types of, like if you're going to do a rulemaking process, well, it has to look like this. If you're going to do a task force, like it has to look like this. So you know, that's kind of an extreme version. I don't know if we'd ever get that sophisticated, but like if there was a way to say, if you're doing a grant program, like use this, you know, template legislative language and just adjust the things for your particular issue as opposed to like changing the way they do grants in your one bill. What do folks think about that? That's so interesting, Felicia. Does your computer know that you're putting up a thumbs up and that's why that little bubble showed up? It was like a little, like a little thumbs up bubble. It happened like right by your head.
That's not weird at all. Okay.
Okay. Next question. What autonomy? Okay, uh, next question. What autonomy do contract managers have? When a contract is awarded, sometimes we get different answers from different people on similar topics.
I feel like a lot of this was answered last month. We got a good sense of like how much discretion folks have on tea, on their, within their agencies, within their departments.
Yeah, I agree. And I think you, even in an earlier presentation, right, like, we learned that there are a lot of things that are negotiable if you know to ask. Which is a problem in and of itself, but yeah, I agree. I think.
We should ask, like, what, what should every grant seeker ask a state agency staffer at some point down the line?
Okay, so let's, let's put that one on the shelf for now. We can come back to it if anyone has a change of mind or a refinement to that question. Next one is how do different funding cycles affect contract terms and funding stability? So I feel like we've heard this a lot too, that the, the departments don't really have any freedom in this space, that they can't start updating the new contracts until the legislative session is done and they know how much money they're allowed to spend and they're, they're, they haven't really been given a pathway to do that. But it sounds like some people had ideas. So I wonder if actually we change this question to like, does your agency have recommendations on how to better bridge funding cycles and funding stability? And just get from them if they have fixes. Next one, there seems to be a kind of firewall between a funder like ODHS and the contracts department. It can take weeks or months to get a contract executed and no way to ask them directly. Yes, I also feel like we've heard that. That there, it was very clear that, like, procurement and program management are separate people, separate bodies of work. There really isn't a question here other than we also learned that it does just take months, that like people's process includes months of time. And that's, I mean, it's helpful to know how long things take.
And especially if, um, DAS has, you know, risk management stuff that they're concerned about.
Go ahead, Felice.
I, I guess I'm wondering, like, with regards to this being, is this a capacity issue? Would more staff address this and what seems like a, I mean, in the last year, as we've talked to people, like, there's just been a lot of finger pointing at DOJ. Like, would if, if DOJ had 15, 50 more staff, would that magically make a difference for all nonprofits? Is that the same for the procurement department? Like, I genuinely don't know. So I'm, I'm really curious, like, yeah, exactly. What, thank you. You're writing it. Thank you.
Yeah, what recommendations do you have for improving, what we say, speed of review and execution of new and, we say new or existing contracts? Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Uh, so Philip answered in the chat and he said, nonprofits would be, prefer not to put information, be asked in applications for stuff that's already on the 990. And I think, I mean, the answer is the 990, someone has to go and look at that and put it in somewhere for it to be easily accessible to them as opposed to on the application, it's just right there. It would involve another level on that side.
Right. And I think, I think what it leads to also is that it's not just from application to like review of the application. It's also then from that to the program side, that's going to then create your grant agreement and your contract where you're then having to submit a lot of the same information again. So part of it, it is like a technological question. And a process question within that.
But if we had a uniform application and we entered it once, it would be everywhere.
Absolutely. And we did, and I think that's where we actually learned about the fact that these, uh, disconnection between different steps in the process exists was, was during that application or during that, during that presentation about the universal applications. So I'm not sure there's a new question here other than us putting it in the survey to get that data point. Or Mary Ann, are you saying you have another, whether it's a survey question or another question that you would like to see in this presentation specifically based on that feedback?
I'm talking and muted, sorry. The GATA from Illinois, I really want to go back to them and say, what were the processes and the tweaks since you, since 2016 that you guys went through? And I want, I don't know how to reach out to them other than, uh, you know, try to call them and say, what would help us now that you've tweaked into yours since you, you began?
Maybe I missed part of what, what you were referring to. Is, is there a specific state agency you're looking for that follow-up from?
Well, I was talking about, uh, what Philip wrote in the chat about the 990 and that it may not be integrated. But the standard form could integrate all the 990 with the standard contract to make it so we didn't have to put those questions in the application again.
Yeah, so that to me sounds suspiciously like a recommendation that might come from the task force as opposed to like a question for this presentation specifically. But I think that's the kind of thing that, we even heard some recommendations, uh, from departments that like a technological solution is something that would be necessary. Um, a single point of entry. Some of them were very adamant that it would be very helpful to have some sort of consolidated platform that contains this information. I think we even talked about, like, in the pre-approval process, like, if you had a system that required organizations to, like, create a profile for their organization and they always had to have their updated 990 and their updated insurance, like, that's your floor, right? Like, you, you don't get to start applying for these grants and stuff if you can't even maintain your profile with those two pieces of information. So I think that's part, that to me sounds like moving into recommendation space where we're like, what is a consolidated tool that makes it possible for me to apply to different grant opportunities without having to upload the same information every single time to every new application, especially if the information has not changed? Okay, so we got another question. Uh, what will it take to get the framework set for this legally? But I think for this, I think it's referring to standard contract language. So I think this is maybe speaking to administrative and legislative authority. This is about, I want to think on this one a little bit harder because I think this is a question, but I think we need more language here. So I'm going to skip it really quick and come back. What drives contract and grant language changes from year to year? I think that that's a perfectly fine question as is. Any feedback on their refinement there? Okay. Uh, can slash which type of contracts can ever be more than 12 months long? 12, 24 months long? Um, I, I think these are maybe some survey questions because I think we have also had some discussion around here where it's kind of like, sometimes there can be contracts that are longer than the biennium. Sometimes they can't be, funds still have to be approved annually. But I think we can, uh, just turn this into a little bit of a survey question, which is, I saw something pop up in her chat.
I, I'm wondering if in the presentation though, if they say, I mean, I guess that they're, whether they say yes or no, like, I just want to, if they say yes, like, who's allowed to do that? I guess I, what I'm really stuck on is just the amount of discretion each, each person has, which I think its intent was probably really wonderful. And now the, the experience of the nonprofit is just kind of, can be all over the place depending upon who they talk to. So, sorry, I'm look, I had written down some questions that I was going to add to today and all yours are way better. So I'm just trying to make sure. Um, I wrote down, are any departments or state agencies allowing for multi-year contracts? Is it their own discretion? If any are, what are best practices? Those that aren't, what's, what would help you get there?
What about that? What are the conditions that would need to be present to approve a contract for 24 months or more?
Sounds great. Thank you.
We'll use that one instead of the other one. Okay. And then the last one is how often are applications and contract language reviewed for clarity and simplicity? I might suggest we turn this into a, like, a what is the process, but I think this is a good question.
And you could make it a survey question if you wanted it by being like, is our, is contract language reviewed for clarity and simplicity every two years? That would be helpful, Mercedes.
Biannually means every other year or is that twice a year?
Seems like a great question for Debbie or Amy.
Let's, let's keep this in the, oh, now I want to write biennium because I know that that means.
Bi, biannually is twice a year.
We don't want that one. We want, does your agency, um, review and update? Yeah, I feel like if we put a time in there though, people are going to be like, we don't do it every two years, but we do it every four. Maybe we just say, review and update contract language on a set schedule. Maybe, okay, now I'm going to jump back to this question because I think there's a survey question here, which is just, do you have, um, because I think this is kind of, we're talking about templates and updating and changing templates. So if we were to say, make a recommendation that all grants should have, you know, this base, uh, con, this base agreement template. What we need to know from that is can a, do agencies already have the administrative authority to implement their own templates? Or if that ends up being, uh, a legislative necessity, like, everyone would have, like, the legislature would actually have to say, you all need to use the same contract template.
Is that something we could get in the legal memo that we've requested?
Save this for a DOJ question.
Though I, I get what, I mean, it's like, do you have the authority to, like, who, oh, this is hard.
It's like, who authorizes? Who authorizes or approves templates to be released, that kind of thing?
Yeah, like if OYA was like, we want to use this whole new template, can they just do that on their own? Are they getting that approved by somebody before they can do it?
Um, that's a multi-part question. That's a, the answer is multifaceted as with all things grants and procurement, right? There actually was legislation and it was, uh, adopted, I think, to, Amy can help answer, maybe 2015. On the procurement side of things, um, DAS and DOJ have authority to create, not only authority, but authority and responsibility, I would say, to create templates that are, once they are created through that piece of legislation, they have to be used by all state agencies. And if they want to use something different than that template, they have to approve for, uh, apply for an exception. And there's lots of reasons that an agency might want something a little bit different than what's in the enterprise template. Now that's on the procurement side of things. Whether that legislation could be, um, interpreted to apply to grant agreements as well is a kind of a gray area. We don't currently have something like that or any central set of rules or statutes that govern who's responsible for what in terms of enterprise coordination of grants.
Okay. Well, and the rule change that DOJ was doing where grants are considered contracts, wouldn't that put a bunch of grant stuff then under the contract rules anyway?
It would, which is, you know, that double edged sword. In a lot of ways, that's good. And in a lot of ways, that's not so great. So, but yeah.
Go ahead, Felice.
I just want to make sure I understand what Debbie just said, that DAS is writing the the templates, the temp, contract templates and has the authority to tell other agencies to use those templates?
It's a, DAS and DOJ are both named in this statute as joint responsibility for creating, um, these templates. And once they're created under this particular statute, then the agencies must, the agencies under DAS and DOJ authority must use them.
So maybe I'm connecting the wrong dots, but I'm just thinking about, like, later on with our recommendations, like, could a recommendation be DAS, please write a template for human service contracts?
I, I guess. To nonprofits, yes, yes, that, that could definitely be a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Then do we need this question? Or do we need it in this, in this way?
Or do we need it in this presentation?
Debbie just gave us a lot of information.
Which I would include in the DAS presentation and, and so that the rest of the task force could have the same information. So, and it might be curious to see within an agency for those that we do not have central enterprise mandated templates. What are the agencies doing and who, you know, who is working on those?
So that sounds like, okay, so we've got two survey questions here. Does your whole agency use the same standard contract templates? Does the whole agency use the same standard grant agreement templates? And I'm going to add a third question here just to be specific. Is that right? Use DAS developed templates? Is that the right way to ask it? DAS dropped?
Sorry, I was on mute, but yes.
Okay. Then those are three questions just about your templates. And then another one about integrating information, another about length of time for contract approvals. And how oft if the agency is regularly reviewing their contract language? Since we have in the survey so far, and then in the presentation, we've got a bunch of stuff about templates. Show us your templates. Tell us how you're putting them together. Who's writing them? How are you using them? If you're using them consistently, if everyone's got different ones, then we're asking about how legislation is determining contract language or creating disruption and use of templates. Then we're asking folks to share about their recommendations on bridging between funding levels. So we've heard this as a problem from agencies in a couple of presentations. And now we're just asking them straight up. Do you have recommendations on how to fix this? What their recommendations are for improving the speed of review and execution of new or existing contracts, which is kind of similar to that, right? I think those kind of go together. Generally, what's kind of driving your language? We know, we know that some people, so we know the answer to this is going to be yes for some departments or some agencies. And so then we're just asking them in the presentation, what would, what conditions need to be present for that to occur? Why might that be offered to someone but not someone else? Then we're also going to ask folks to just share a little bit about their process on how they're reviewing that language, which is also a yes, no survey question. And the last few things we have here is examples of how other states have addressed this issue, which I think we've gotten a little bit of that from the policy lab information from NAO. Hopefully they'll come and do some public comment either at this meeting or a future meeting about this, about kind of what examples might be out there that we could also be looking at as we get into recommendation phase. Are there states that drive ongoing contracts by need measurement? That's an interesting question. I don't know about that one. I want to think about that a little bit.
I don't know if I understand the question.
That's so what it, or it's such a foreign concept. Who's needs, right?
Right. Like it's, it's an interesting one. I'm like, I'm trying to think about what it makes me think about. And then how can we get away from the hard term end dates? Still somehow extend. Yeah. I think honestly, I wouldn't be surprised to hear from agencies that extending contracts with no additional funds is the best way that they have come up with trying to bridge the gap between funding cycle and funding cycle. That tends to be when they offer it, right? They're like, look, we can't give you any more money, but you can keep spending till December. And that might be what they have come up with to achieve that. So I'd be interested to see if that's where that comes, that comes in. Anything missing? Anything that's like, I really want to make sure we talk about a certain thing when it comes to standard contracting language. And multiple, you know, contract terms and multi-year contracts.
So I don't see anything in there about cost of living for multi-year? Was that somewhere else? It might be in living wages.
Yeah, I believe that should be in March's presentation. If COLA and inflation, that was one of the questions is taken into account when projecting future funding.
And I also don't see anything, and I don't know where it fits, but we had talked about maybe having a kicker fund or a slush fund so that people, people could be paid sooner once the biennium hits. So some, some way of doing a loan or a, a no interest loan or a advance or something so that people aren't hanging out there for, you know, three months, six months to get their first payment at the start of a biennium.
So I started typing and then I stopped because one of the things that we learned in a previous presentation was that even folks who are doing reimbursement based contracts can sometimes front money if the organization asks and the contract manager approves. So it's kind of like an if this, then that situation, but that we know that they can do that seems more of an issue of condition. Under what conditions will you approve upfront funding?
Yes, conditions.
Yeah. Felice, go ahead.
I think this is asked potentially in a different way than this is a really good way to ask it. In the, in the legal memo that I requested, that I think you said we would have in April-ish. Cause I, it sounds like it is allowed, which answers our first critical question. But then what are the conditions? So I don't, I, I, maybe we don't need a legal memo on that specifically, not a, but a legal answer regarding that, that question, because we, we are hearing that it is allowed, but it's, it's the conditions that we need to understand. Thanks.
So we can have a yes, no question, which we know the answer to this is going to for some people be yes, for some people be no. See, under what conditions would the agency approve upfront or startup funding at the start of a new contract or grant agreement?
And actually, a new biennium.
Okay. And so hopefully there we get a little bit of a click down from the like, if you ask if there's enough funding, if the contract manager approves, like we get a little bit more detail on like what's, what's happening in those ifs? What's being considered in those ifs? Okay. I think that looks good. And Amy, I'm going to try to edit this a little bit, or maybe I can send it to you and you help me edit that we, we use more passive language here. Does the agency as opposed to places where I put, does your agency? All right. Any other good of the order?
Thank you Mercedes.
Thank you all. And I'll see you Tuesday, meeting adjourned.